Meeting folks, we're going to start the meeting. I ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible). The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, communicable, liquidating, and just for all.
This is the Board of Selectmen, Monday, September the 12th, 2022. Our Chair, Shana, is not with us tonight. We hope to see her in two weeks. And the meeting is being recorded as indicated there. Under acknowledgements and recognitions, we just wanted to call attention to the fact that there's going to be a vaccine clinic. I'll ask Jim Hartnett to go over the details for us.
I do. So the Board of Health is holding, along with the pharmacy, Westport Apothecary, a vaccine clinic on September 16th at the high school, the old high school, on Main Road, from 3:30 to 7:30. It'll be in the cafeteria of the former Junior Senior High School. They'll be offering three shots, they'll be offering the COVID boosters, the primary series, and also the flu vaccines. So if anybody's interested, they can just show up on the 16th between 3:30 and 7:00.
Thank you. Do you have any other acknowledgements from the Board of Selectmen or recognitions? There will be an executive session tonight, so we'll ask all of you to leave. Don't take offense. And the next meeting is two weeks from tonight, September 26th. The first item on the agenda is that this is a joint meeting between Select Board and the school committee. We'd like to welcome school committee members here tonight. And this is to fill a vacancy. It's the unexpired term of Nancy Taveras. And there are two candidates. I understand, and Jim, you can embellish, that this, the way this would be handled is we'd have a discussion and ask the candidates to speak. And then it would be a joint vote to select the candidate. And could you add anything to that?
I think that's pretty much it. It's a joint meeting between the school committee and the Board of Selectmen. The majority votes of both would determine who the next candidate would be, or next fully appointment of the resignation of Nancy Taveras. The appointment will expire on April 11th, so this is a short term, just for the next few months. And we do have two candidates that have expressed interest. Cynthia, who's a, I'm sorry, I'm going to mispronounce that name, but.
Kazakowicz.
Thank you very much, and Michelle Orlando.
Now, regarding the school committee, do you have anything to do? You have to call your meeting to order, or do you think?
Yeah, they have to.
Okay. Well, I'm sure Nancy Taveras will be called to the meeting to order at this time. We can proceed with the business as posted, which is a joint Board of Selectment, which is supposed to fill our vacancy. Thank you.
Great. Special. Okay. First of all, let me ask, any comments from either board regarding the process? I'm hearing none. It might be good to just get into this and have each of the candidates make a presentation if they're so inclined. So I'll just do this the way it's listed here. Ms. Cynthia Kazakowicz, if you want to wish to come and speak and tell us about yourself.
First of all, I want to just make it clear, I am not intending to run in April for this position. I just think the open position for this short period of time provides a unique opportunity to the town to get somebody who, on the, on the committee, that perhaps wouldn't run, and maybe provide some unique perspectives to the challenges that the school system here in Westport is facing. You know, I'm, you know, as we all know, that the district and the committee, everybody in town has their own opinions, you know, some good, some bad, some in between, and I'm of the opinion that if you're not going to walk in their shoes, you don't make, you don't criticize. And I think there's a lot we can do in here for our children in Westport. You know, the, the school isn't a bad school. I mean, I looked at the numbers, we're average. But the perception in town is that we're below average. Our enrollment is abominable. There's, there's over 3,000, almost 4,000 children under four, under 18 years old in this town. We had, our enrollment's only 1,300. So there's clearly a disconnect between who wants to, you know, go to Westport and the school system and those who don't. And I don't think we're going to have a great school system until we get our enrollment up, and we've got to figure out why that is the way it is. In particular, the attrition at the high school level is ridiculous. I mean, we start with 100 kids going into high school and 60-something or 70-something graduating. And why is that? And the schools that they actually go, choose to go to, I was rather dismayed when I read the list of, the list of schools that are top 10 or 20, we were going to, the shorelines. There wasn't one Ivy League school in the bunch. The best school was University of Amherst, which is a great school. But, you know, I think we need to get our, our children, you know, excited about being educated. We need their parents to be excited about them being educated in Westport. And without that, you know, the, you know, the town isn't a town without our children. I mean, I'm sure there's plenty of people here who are lifelong Westporters, and we want, we want to keep that. You know, unless we get our children better educated and our parents on board with the Westport school system, that's not going to happen. So that's why I'm here. Again, I'm not going to run in April unless the board really twists my arm if you, if they elect me, but, you know, I just thought it would be nice to, you know, have a different perspective from a different.
Thank you, Ms. Kazakowicz. Would you be interested in hearing questions from any of the members of the school committee or the select board? Any questions you'd like to ask this committee? Well, thank you.
Well, I would just make a statement. We had a Harvard student death warrant out of Westport schools two years ago, so we have had our share of ideas just in our last year.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just, again, just for, for clarification, I'm on a house there in Baltimore, so I'm going to address the last student's COVID, and we're going to be down there all the time. And I was just reading this, this, this is drawn.
I'd be happy to hear that.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Lando, do you want to speak?
So thank you for having me here. So for those of you that know me, Michelle Orlando, I was on the school committee. I was born and raised in Westport, graduated schools here, but I was on the school committee for three years. I had run in April and did not get reelected. So obviously, when this opportunity presented itself, I was certainly interested. Having joined, I was obviously anxious to get on the committee, give back. My son graduated in 2011, so I don't have any children in the school, but I was anxious to give back to the town that I grew up in and get on a committee and do some volunteering and do some work in the town. And it presented, the opportunity presented itself. So I ran and was thankful to be, to be elected. So anxious to get involved, and then, of course, less than a year later, we had COVID, so that certainly kind of took things for a turn. So not only are you learning about the committee, about the roles that the school committee plays, which I think a lot of people have a misperception of what the school committee actually does, you know, my eyes were wide open with that, learning that. So, you know, we had to pivot and, and deal with COVID, and at the same time, you know, you get put on the subcommittee. So I was, I was put on the budget subcommittee, which worked with the town, worked with, worked with the finance committee through the challenges that the town faced and the school faced. So that was quite an undertaking and quite eye-opening, and it takes a while, you know, to learn it all and to maneuver through it and make the best decisions that you can for not only the district but the town. So in addition to that, was put on the subcommittee for labor negotiations with the union. So did that for three years. And I know that we were just, we were still negotiating at election time in April, but I believe they did finally come, reach a decision, and it was a back and forth, but it was a lot of working together with the, with the union members or the admin of the union, happy, you know, to have been a part of that and learn along with that. So obviously, I was, I wanted to continue. I don't think three years is enough, especially having to deal with the financial issues that the town and the school was facing, and certainly COVID. And as we were, you know, starting to come out of that, open the new school, anxious to see what that was going to do as we, you know, we come back and, to come back into some normal. So that's the reason that I'd like to be appointed, to get back to it and see what I can do and bring my experience, not only the experience that I did have for three years on the school committee, but certainly my professional experience to the school, to the finances, negotiations, you know, whatever, whatever it may be that, you know, I'm able to, to help out with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would you be willing to entertain any questions from the select board or from the school committee? At this point, would there be any public members who wish to make comment? Thank you. Well, we do appreciate those presentations, which are very good, by the way. And I think at this point, unless there's further questions or a conversation appearing to be done, it's simply a matter then of, of having a vote. My preference, and others can disagree, and I'd be amenable to that, is to say we have two candidates. I would say, by raising hands, the people who vote for Ms. Kazakowicz, and then after that, the people who vote for Ms. Orlando. So then we know how many people voted for candidate A and candidate B. Sometimes when you make motions, it gets a little bit confusing, but in some cases, we do make motions and select a candidate, then we have to vote on the motion. My preference is to, what I outlined, because I think it's clear that who voted for whom. And that's the way I think it should be. So, but I'm willing to entertain a discussion on the process. Are there any comments in that regard?
School committee has no objection.
All right. Then I think we reach the vote. And I think you all know the outline. This is for a vacant position that would be short-term, and it would be.
Until April.
Until April 11th, is that, I assume, the town election date?
Yep.
All right. So I'm just going to go in the order there. For those people who are in favor of Ms. Kazakowicz, please raise your hand. And I'll ask, will it take note of that? For those in favor of Ms. Orlando, please raise your hand.
So staying just to be safe.
I don't.
That's not a tight one anyways.
Okay. I believe the count would be seven in favor and one extension for Ms. Orlando. We thank you for that, and we congratulate Ms. Orlando. We also congratulate Ms. Kazakowicz coming forth and appreciate what you had to say tonight. So thank you.
But also, I would encourage Ms. Kazakowicz to, you know, volunteer for committees that, I'm not sure if she's on or not, any of the committees, but I would certainly encourage you to volunteer for other committees. You know, I will say personally, to my own reason for voting for Ms. Orlando, is she has the experience. We kind of need someone who can, boots on the ground, get going. But we would not at all be adverse to you volunteering for any of the other openings we have on all, all kinds of committees, and we really need the help. So please don't be discouraged.
Yeah. Again, we just wanted to get a start on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does the school committee need to do anything to terminate their, your meeting?
Yeah.
Rejourn?
Most of them.
I have to.
Second. All, all very high.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay.
As much as we love to. Thank you.
Good luck. Tom, it's good to see you. Thanks for joining us. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public, agenda is a public hearing.
I remember 6:20.
Oh, 6:20, we have to wait. Well, we have to.
6:16.
Just saying the comedy or something to keep it going.
You can go to the next one.
Yeah. Why don't we go then to three licenses and permits are taking us out of order because the public meeting is 6:20, and you are correct in that. Thank you. So licenses and permits, 3A, there's a request from the Holy Ghost Club for a one-day liquor license for Friday, September the 16th, that's this Friday, from 5:00 to 10:00, for a fish fry dinner. Jim?
We did have a report from Lieutenant Kudrow did not have objection to this.
I'll move it. Thank you.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? The motion carries, four in favor, none opposed, and one person is absent. The next item, 3B, is the request from the Holy Ghost Club also for a one-day liquor license for Saturday, September 24th, 2022, with a rein date of September 25th, 2022. This is a one-day liquor license from 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM for a fundraiser. Jim, any comments here?
Yeah, the same. This is pretty standard with the Holy Ghost Club. Lieutenant Kudrow, do you recommend?
Move it with please recommendations.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. No further discussion. I assume it's time to vote. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. The motion is unanimous with one absence. Excuse me for just one second. Okay, we're going to do, continue on to item four, which is appointments and resignations. I think we can get some of these done, if not all of them. A, 4A is a request from John Cabral to be appointed to the Council on Aging. There's another item later on that involves my own status of Council on Aging, but this would be for one of the vacancies that exists, or it is, at the moment, the only vacancy that exists. And Jim, you may point out to us that it is the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, that approves and appoints members of the Council on Aging. Do you have any comments?
No comment.
And this, I assume, is recommended by the Council on Aging. Is anybody from the Council on Aging here this morning? Although, at the moment, I am a member of the board.
Yeah.
And I do know they recommend Mr. Cabral.
I'll move his appointment.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed? None. Motion carries, four in favor, none opposed, and one absence. Next item is a request from J. Daniel Irwin to be appointed to the Safety Regulation Board. Now, Jim, so many comments on what that committee does?
Sure. He had a lot of requests him to be on the board. He's got 30 years of experience in occupational safety and health, so a notice on the Board of Selectmen's minutes, if there was an opening. I did speak with him last week, the week before. He did seem very interested, he seemed knowledgeable in the OSHA regulations, and would like to be part of the board.
I'll move him.
Thank you.
Okay. Any comment? Is Mr. Cabral here? I mean, Mr. Irwin, sorry. Mr. Cabral is not here today. Mr. Irwin is, no, Mr. Irwin, I assume he's not here. Okay, motion made and seconded, further discussion. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. Four in favor, none opposed, one extension. Item 4C, looking at my watch, we can start shortly with the other item, public hearing. 4C is a request from Chief Pelletier of the Police Department to appoint Raquel Rodericks as part-time EMD 911 dispatcher and her DM community service officer. Jim, any comments on this for us?
It's just a recommendation or request from Chief Pelletier to appoint her as part-time EMD dispatcher and community service officer. He has stated that there's no additional funding to be required for this position.
Okay. Is, is Ms. Rodericks, per chance, in the, with us tonight? What is the pleasure of the committee?
Move reappoint. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
Just see if we, on the full-time appointments, now that COVID's calmed down, we can have them in, especially if it's going to be like a police officer type of thing.
If I was me, I'll maybe ask Jim and follow up.
It'd be nice if the community knows who's going to be giving the records.
This is part-time.
This is part-time, yes.
Yeah, it'll be all community officers too. All right.
Okay. And we vote it on that, I'll say. The next item is, you'll see why I'm chuckling, the request to change the appointment of Richard Brewer from the Council on Aging, from a Council on Aging member, to the Board of Selectmen liaison to the Council on Aging. Okay. What that's about is, on June 21st, the Select Board appointed me to the Council on Aging, and I graciously accept it. However, I occupied one of the seven positions, and I guess we didn't understand at the time that I was taking the place of Ms. Boxler, who was the Board of Select, Selectman or Select Board representative, which would not take up a position on the board. That person would be an observer, I guess, as if you did, I don't think you voted.
There's no vote. Yeah, the Select Board member is a.
Non-voting.
A non-voting.
Yeah. And I agree to that. I mean, that was the intent in the first place. In this, in this way, that would create another vacancy, and I do know the Council on Aging does have a candidate in mind for the future, in addition to Mr. Cabral, who was appointed tonight. So it's really to do that, and I, I'm fine with the role of being representative. That's what I thought it was in the first place, and woke up one morning and found that I was on Council on Aging's board, which is a very nice board, by the way. Now, in order to perfect this, because I was appointed for three years, I think, Jim, help to hear, the cleanest thing to do is for me to resign.
Yes.
Okay. And to that end, I did write a letter today of resignation with great regret. I would hope that the first order of business would be for the board to accept that resignation.
So. Thank you.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
We can save the favor and I'll send you a letter.
I was going to say, if you don't, I get a letter.
We appreciate that.
That's okay. All right. So I look forward to being the Select Board Representative to the Council on Aging.
I will move that we appoint you to be Select Board Liaison to the Council on Aging.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion. Now, I'm fine with that, as I said earlier, but I was wondering in this process, you know, they have, well, they have six board members at the moment, and they can go to seven. They're very capable people, very good people, they do a wonderful job over there, we all know that. So I was wondering, why do we need a representative there at all? Is this something, there must have been a reason way back when, you know? Is there any history on this that you might know?
Well, I mean, I can speak to the fact that during budget and that, that movement, and when you get right up in front of the finance committee, I think it's kind of good for someone to know what's going on there. That would be pretty much the only thing. Through COVID, there was some stuff where they needed some money for some funding programs, and that was probably important. But other than that, there's no, we don't have any involvement in the day-to-day dealings. It's nice to know what they're doing, but they also send out a newsletter, which is very comprehensive. So I'd say really, just, just having someone there, they want us there to look at what's going on with their budget.
Yeah, I guess it makes sense. I have no, I have no issue with that. I was just curious as to how that started. We do have the ability to appoint, and the appointments, when they come due, it's staggered. We could elect not to reappoint. That would be our prerogative. So we have sufficient control, but I think I'll enjoy it, and why don't we go ahead with this, and I'll talk about it again some, some time in the future. So, so a motion was made and seconded, voted?
Yes.
That's right. Okay. So, but we didn't, did we vote for the Select Representative? Did we vote?
No.
Wait, no, say no, I'm sorry. Just, we just took his.
Right, you moved it. Stay a second.
There you go.
Okay.
Sorry, my bad.
Further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposed? Thank you. I look forward to that. I think now we should move ahead with the public meeting, the hearing, because it's past the 6:20 starting time. So let me read that, and we'll come back to the other items. There's a number of other items for us. So let me read, just read it as it's stated. It's a public hearing to, it's a Chapter 61A release of 559 Main Road, Parcel B, as in Bravo on plan of land, dividing map 69 Lot 12, as recorded at the Bristol County Registry of Deeds Book 9420, page 183, Parcel B, as in Bravo, request to assign the option to purchase to the Buzzards Bay Coalition. Jim, could you give us the information?
So this was before the board at the last meeting, and the board continued it tonight to give, I think, the Buzzards Bay Coalition the opportunity to see if they can secure financing to purchase, purchase this property. So it's before the Board of Selectmen, now, it was the property's in the Chapter 61A, and the board, you're looking for the board to make a decision to either release the 61A so that it can be sold, you could, you want record to purchase the property, or as was being requested from the Buzzards Bay Coalition, is to assign the first right of refusal over to the Buzzards Bay Coalition. That's what we have right now.
Okay. There are a number of people here tonight who may want to speak to the issue. I don't know what the bidding order would be here, but certainly the property owner is here, Buzzards Bay Coalition. I'll start with the Buzzards Bay Coalition. If Mr. Decker, if you should say anything about this.
I'd be happy to do so.
Now, I'll afford the same opportunity to others, but.
Come, so.
It's your, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. My name is Alan Decker. I'm the Director of Land Protection with Buzzards Bay Coalition. I was here as Town Administrator mentioned two meetings ago, when the item was tabled. The request is from Buzzards Bay Coalition for the town to assign its right of refusal to the coalition in order to achieve what we believe is an important outcome for this property, which is as a conservation, with a conservation outcome. The property, I've got some maps, if the board's not intimately familiar with the property, that'd be happy to hand up through you if, if you're amendable.
Was it similar to the one we had before?
They are, they look like this. I didn't hand up anything last time, but what they show is natural resource values. I believe that's a GIS map, which is perfectly sufficient. This one shows, gives you some context.
All right.
If you don't mind, there should be enough for each of the members. What this shows you is the, the property in the context of other existing open space, as well as the natural resource values that are on the property that we believe are, are particularly important in this property. It has priority habitats mapped to have priority habitat by the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. Also has core habitat and critical natural landscape, all of which are just resource values that, that are, that are important for protection purposes. You will note, there's a water body that crosses the property or a water course, that is Snell Creek runs, runs south through the property. Snell Creek happens to be one of a very small number of, of streams. Actually, Westport is the proud jurisdiction of a number of these small brooks that still have native populations of sea-run brook trout. That's, that's one of the coalition's principal interests, is that.
Okay.
That's one of our particular interests. As you'll see, we have done, along with the town and Westport Land Conservation Trust, significant protection just a little bit west of this parcel on Angeline Brook. Snell Creek is, as I said, is similar with, with the same brook trout in it. It's in, in our opinion, these are, this is an important resource to protect. What we would like to do is acquire the property from, from the current seller and then make it a publicly accessible, open reserve. We would continue to own the property long-term, the vast majority of the property, I would say. You'll note, there is a house on the property. We've got some ideas, a strategy as to what to do with that, with that house. And we just believe that that's a, that's a good outcome for the property. The town, because of the 61A status, does have this, this right to acquire or assign the interest, and we are asking the board to do so. We would like to effectuate the transaction and, and close, close the property into, into conservation. I'm happy to answer questions that any of you might have about this.
Questions, anyone? The Board Select, the Board of Selectmen first, then I'll ask, same with the public. I have a question, just so, I should know this by now, but these are complicated transactions. So who buys from whom? How does this work mechanically, maybe you or Jim or?
For the Land Conservation.
I'm happy to answer as well.
We assign the rights to purchase to Buzzards Bay Coalition. They then work with the property owner to close on the property, secure funding, close on the property.
Then, do you have to match, is it you, has to match the offer that's out there?
We, we would, yes. We effectively step into the shoes of the current buyer on the contract. So we would agree, and we know this, to pay the price that the contract is signed for right now and close within the statutory period of time unless another agreement can be reached with, with the seller.
And what is the role of the Westport Land Conserv? And what is the role of the Westport Land Conservation Trust in this? They're not here tonight, I would think.
They did submit an email in favor of it. But they are not part of this transition, transaction.
They certainly know about it, and, and as the Town Administrator mentioned, they are fully in support of, of a conservation outcome and supportive of the coalition being involved. They do know about it. They're just, in the words of the Executive Director, Mr. Moran, they've got their hands full right now. So we would like to, to assist in this, in this instance, in this, again, open space, publicly accessible outcome for the property.
Mr. Betty Slade?
Betty Slade, who would hold the conservation restriction?
So, so conservation restriction could certainly be part of the, part of the transaction, part of the project. I think our long-term goal is to work with the Town Conservation Commission to hold the, hold the restriction on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Is that the usual course of business in these matters?
That's one way it's been done, it's been utilized a number of times. There's a couple of options. You know, the board could assign the first right of refusal to the Buzzards Bay Coalition. You have the ability to put restrictions on that assignment. I did speak to Mr. Decker about that earlier, but that would devalue the property and do with them in the fundraising, so that may not be a viable option. I think they're also looking to come back to the town at some point, either to the Ag Open Space Committee or to the Community Preservation Committee, to sell the conservation restriction to the town for, I think they're looking at roughly $100,000.
Correct, correct.
So there could potentially be a cost to the town moving forward. There's about 80, $85,000 left, the amount that was authorized for borrowing for these types of projects with the Ag Open Space, which could be used, and the CDC fund could also be used.
Thank you. Mr. White, wish you to speak.
Yeah, I would like to speak in favor of the Buzzards Bay acquiring the right on this property. The planning board opined on this and sent a letter to you some time ago. They voted unanimously to have the town turn over the right of first refusal to a nonprofit, either the Land Trust or Buzzards Bay. It's important to preserve this.
Any questions for Mr. White? I think that was clear. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Decker.
You're very welcome. Happy to answer any other questions that might come up.
Now, there are others who wish to speak, so I invite them, and you identify yourself.
Good evening to the board. My name is Mackenzie Long. I work with the Law Office of Williams Quentin O'Leary as a paralegal, and I'm here for discussion purposes. In late April, early May, I spoke with Theo in the assessor's office regarding the outstanding 61A lien, and I was told that the parcel that complied with the 61A, if you look at the packet that Mr. Hartnett had given to you, you'll notice that there is, on the map, you can see the solar field directly to the west. And then if you go adjacent to the solar field, there is this parcel here. It's all woodlands with the exception of this parcel right on the outside, closer to Main Road, if the board can... So that originally was the lot that allowed this parcel to be placed in the 61A program. The Pettys have since decided, the current owners have since decided to subdivide and retain that lot and put the other 32 acres or so up for sale. At that time, after speaking with Theo, this was back in May, we entered into a purchase and sales agreement with the Pettys to purchase the property. The Pettys then complied with the 61A lien and notified the board, you know, through the notice of intent to sell the property. Stephanie has since spent thousands of dollars over the last five months to get the clear to close from the lender and is prepared to close on the property within one week of the board releasing the lien tonight. Stephanie's intent is to use the property as a horse farm and further expand into agricultural farming later. Her intent is not to develop the land for the purpose of sale or otherwise. Stephanie has dreamed of owning a horse farm for years, and after years of searching, within weeks of closing, only to find out that the Buzzards Bay Commission Coalition intends to purchase the property. We only recently found out about this at the end of August at the last meeting when you deferred the vote. We were under the impression that it was a simple, you know, release of the lien and that the assignment would not take place, but that is not the case, and here we are. The Buzzards Bay Coalition intends to purchase the property in order to protect Snell Creek and Angeline Brook, as Mr. Decker explained. But these two areas are currently protected and will remain protected under the Wetlands Protection Act. Conservation Commission has authority over those, and there would never be anything allowed to be done within that space without the Conservation Commission's approval, and current wetlands regulations would not allow any sort of development within those areas. The Buzzards Bay Coalition also requests that Westport lend $100,000, as Mr. Hartnett mentioned, in order to facilitate the land. Again, I want to mention that Stephanie is able to close on the land within one week. Mr. Petty here has had the property on the market for a year, up until the point of May, when we went under agreement. We are now 108 days into the 120 days statutory period to release the 61A lien, and if the board were to assign the right, it is likely that it would take months longer before the property could be sold. Furthermore, Stephanie is also prepared to handle the removal of two dilapidated outbuildings that contain asbestos. She has already begun the permitting process with the town. Building Commissioner Ralph Souza is aware, and she has begun the process to have the, both the rodent and radon inspections done per the requirements for a demolition permit within the town of Westport. And lastly, overall, the common goal here is to protect the resource area. Stephanie intends to do so by releasing the lien and allowing her to purchase the property. She intends to develop it into a horse farm and then further into an agricultural farm down the line, and then put the property back under 61A. Currently, it is not feasible to stay within the 61A program because of the, the farmland that allowed it to be placed in is no longer a part of the main parcel. So it would have to be taken out or assigned to the Buzzards Bay Coalition if we were to transfer that. If we were to release the lien, then Stephanie could purchase it, go through the process of developing it into a horse farm and further into an agricultural farm, at which point she would request putting it back under 61A. Lastly, Stephanie, also in, you know, motion with, with the common goal here of protecting the area, is willing to grant the Buzzards Bay Coalition an easement because of the fact that they own a budding property in the area, both along the Angeline Brook and Snell Creek, to allow them to develop paths and walk and inspect the property and, you know, enjoy the natural, nature and the natural resources that occur on the property. At this time, I'm going to have, turn it over to Stephanie here and let her address the board, tell you a little bit about herself.
Before we do that, a question, sir?
Yes.
Regarding that discussion with the assessor and that piece of land you referred to?
Yes.
Could you give me the significance of that one more time, clearly has, how does that play into this?
So in order to fall into the 61A, and, and mind you, I've done a lot of research, but I am no expert on the 61A here, but as far as I've been informed, in order for the property to be placed into the 61A program, it has to be a farm with five acres of land or more being used for agricultural use. The portion that was used for farmland, as I mentioned earlier, was subdivided by the current owner and since retained by them, not listed for sale, not a part of this parcel that would be being released. Because of that, the property cannot remain in 61A as it stands, as far as I'm aware. And so because of that, it would need to be then developed into agricultural farming once more to be placed back under 61A.
Thank you. Okay, would you like to speak?
Please. So Chapter 61A is intended for both farmland and forestry. And forest, since forest land may be enrolled in program based on the degree of land's ability to grow timber. And this entire parcel is a wooded area, so it still falls under 61A even though it's not farmed. And we have a lot of parcels like this all over town that are in forestry and not farmed. It can still remain in 61A. I just want to clarify that.
They would have to file a forestry management?
They would, they would.
Get accepted by the assessor's office? Okay, thanks for that clarification. And if you could give me full names for the...
Hi, I'm Stephanie Cormier. I am a current Dartmouth resident, trying to become a Westport resident. I am a physical therapist and the parent of a horse-crazy little girl. I myself am very involved with horses. I have dreamed of having a farm since I was a little girl. I've made, I'm sorry, I've made a lot of sacrifices to be here today in a position where I could purchase a piece of property like this. This property is perfect for me. I look forward to the challenge of restoring this property and developing it into a small horse farm and branching into agriculture. Specifically, organic farming and bees are something that I'm very interested in and have been doing a lot of research on, which are very important. I originally put my first offer in on this property back in April. It took quite some time to get under agreement and for the ball to get rolling. We are now five months down the road, and I have spent hundreds of hours working towards this purchase and thousands of dollars in attorney fees, appraisals and inspections, only to find out in the very last weeks before the closing that it may be taken from me. I have no interest in trying to chop up this land or subdividing it. In fact, I was thrilled to learn that the property had wetlands on it because I would love to be a good steward of the land and protect it. In 2020, I was actively involved in protecting a section of wetlands abutting Lake Nokachoke, and I was quoted here in this newspaper article saying, "More than anything, we would like to see this land permanently protected." I fully support the work that Buzzards Bay Coalition does every day to protect this watershed, but I can promise you, this land will be in good hands with me and no one will ever harm it. Please don't take this from me. I want more than anything to be a valuable and productive member of this community, and I will make the cutest darn little farm you've ever seen. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Ms. Cormier? Thank you. Now, others wish to speak? Cole? This is a public hearing. Anybody?
David Cole, Vice Chair of the Ag Open Space Council. And on behalf of that council, we considered this property and voted unanimously to recommend that it not be released and that we exercise the right of first refusal. And we are supportive of the efforts by the Coalition to proceed with this. The Ag and Open Space Council has $83,000 of remaining borrowing authority. We haven't taken up the consideration of how, whether to apply it in this case, waiting to see what the board, select board's decision is. I just mentioned it where it is now, I guess in 61A, it can be switched, I would presume, to 61, which is for forest land. And I gather it's mostly forest land at the present time, and that would be a more appropriate classification. The hearing that there's a plan to turn it into a horse farm raises two questions for me. One, wouldn't that probably entail quite an extensive clearing of the woodlands that are there? And that would open up issues of drainage into that part of Snell Creek and possibly also into the next creek over. Angeline Brook. And so, and, but having it as a horse farm causes me some concern. If you're having a lot of horses around there, why, they could add to the issues of pollution in the stream. The only horse farm I know of in town, it's a pretty big one over off of Olin Howland Drive, is totally cleared and has big barns and facilities and riding areas. And I don't know whether that's the direction in which they're going, but if it is, it would totally change the character of that property and make it, I think, much more disadvantageous for preserving the Snell Creek. And that is a cold water creek. It depends on, cold water is what permits the breeding of the anadromous fish in there. And if you cleared the land to create a horse farm, why, you could well lose the properties of that cold water creek. So I, I think the alternative that's being proposed by the Coalition is much more favorable for the environment and for the preservation of that territory for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Other speakers?
May I, can I just answer a few questions?
Yes. We really would have to ask you to go back to the microphone. Sorry for the inconvenience. I've got, Ms. Cormier?
I, I recognize your concern about how much land would be cleared for, for a horse farm, but I promise you, it's not 30 acres that is needed. A horse farm can operate on a very small piece of land. It, only maybe a few acres would need to be cleared and not necessarily anywhere near the wetlands. The property is 30 acres. The front half is mainly uplands and dry, and the back is, is where the creek is and where the wetlands are. There would be no horses anywhere near the wetlands. I'm sure conservation would not allow that, regardless, even if I wanted to.
Thank you. Mr. Petty, you wish to speak? Mr. Long, if you wish to speak later after the question?
Oh, I was just letting him sit back.
Oh, okay.
Yes, because Mitchell Petty, I'm the person that actually owns the property. And I do know that the town has a 61A lien on it, but it's a prime example of what's wrong with our democracy today. First of all, when I started this process, we owned 56 acres, and after the survey, we miraculously lost 13 acres. And my family's been paying taxes on that 13 acres for over 100 years. So I don't know if any of you have a checkbook, but if you want to come to me a check for what you owe me, it would be appreciated. On the farm itself, I grew up on that farm, that, all the way to the wetlands, was once all farmland with open fields. So to hear about, you know, the trees and all that, it's kind of fallen deaf ears. I could bring you a picture of what the farm looked like back in the 50s and 60s. So the, I've been advised by Leo Council not to take a side on this issue because it is your decision, but I just wanted to kind of make that stated about the 13 acres that we've paid property taxes on for over 100 years and now have miraculously disappeared.
Thank you, Mr. Petty. Any questions? Anybody else wish to speak? With the pleasure of the board.
One of the main reasons we're here is because occasionally things slip through the cracks, and that's what happened here. Fortunately, when Mr. Petty came to the town, the various entities in town, at first they didn't feel like they had any interest in it. After further review and after seeing it come before the AgCon, it was based to release from 61A, they, many people realized how important it was to actually save this. They can't speak for, they can't speak for the land and the survey or whatever, you know, happened over the years. That's, that, that doesn't have anything to do with what's going on right here right now. What's going on here right now is, if you look at the overview of the map, it's not just Snell Creek that's within this, where there are, as I'm counting right now, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine different tributaries running down to the river that run through either on or near this property. And there's a significant amount of that that's been saved by Buzzards Bay Coalition, and this is one of the abutting properties. Again, it's a very difficult decision that this board has to make.
Just going to mic off?
Sorry, the mic fell off. Terribly sorry. So, this is a significant decision that this board has to make and it does not do this lightly. And we understand that, there are people involved. But what we're trying to do is save a piece of property and guarantee that it can't be developed. And someone can buy this for a horse farm, that might not work out. And, you know, someone could go bankrupt and turn around and sell it to a developer. It's released from 61A. That's permanent. It doesn't, doesn't happen. The town has very few opportunities where it can actually exercise its right of first refusal. We've lost a lot of other land where we haven't been able to because we didn't have the resources. Buzzards Bay Coalition stepped in. We were unaware that they were going to do this before they did. And so, you know, we were, you know, we didn't, when the opportunity presented itself, we decided to let them do their due diligence and come to us with a proposal. I really, I, I, I get where you're at. I've been in your position, buying a house and then last minute, it didn't go through. And it was, it was, it's really hard. But again, there's three, chapter 61 involves either forestry, farming, or recreation. And at least two of these things, this property can be saved for. It is an extremely, extremely sensitive area. And, you know, I, I get that you just want to put horses on there, but, you know, horses are not without a detriment to the environment. They're large animals and the more you have, the more you have to deal with. And farms too. So, this is currently in forestry. It's a giant, it's, it's the, really a center of a huge parcel of forest. And so, for that reason, very sorry, but I'm gonna move that we exercise our right of first refusal and assign it to the Buzzards Bay Coalition.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Further discussion, discussion on the motion.
I, I just gonna say, I agree with some of Brian's points. Mr. Petty's been here his whole life. I think most of us know him in the room. It's one of those tough decisions that we need to have to make, but what Brian said is true. We, we, we haven't had a lot where somebody can't handle a property and ends up going to development and, and there's nothing we can do, especially if they go 40P40 or whatever it might be. Root and Concom is the only thing that can have any kind of agreement. I wish we could work with the person. I don't know if you do any programs or we could have a portion that might be able to fulfill their dream, but I think we got, you know, best interest of the town is to try to preserve it.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Further discussion from the board, select board. This is a public hearing. Any comments from the public? Any further comments? Mr. Long?
I could just make one more comment briefly. As you can see, Stephanie is very passionate about this and has put a lot of time and energy into it. And frankly, I think that she might even be open to putting a deed restriction on it that would prevent it from going out of, you know, the program. I was unaware that the forestry would qualify under 61A.
Forestry or recreation?
So, it's under 61. Okay. And so, you know, in that case, I do believe that she'd be willing to even keep it within the 61 program and remain in the forestry. You know, if we're talking about forestry here, we're taking trees down anyway for development of, you know, wood and whatnot. And I, listen, I hear you loud and clear on the preservation of the water and the, you know, watershed and everything else and as does Stephanie, you know, she's worked with the coalition here, as she mentioned, you know, to get the property up and, you know, do, in, in Dartmouth on another, another matter. You know, but would be willing to put terms and conditions within this deal to ensure that, you know, as you mentioned, people do fall through and land does get, you know, things happen, as we said, and it could fall into different hands. But even if it were to remain in the 61A program, you know, a mortgage does supersede that. It is allowed that the mortgages, you know, if they have to foreclose, the property would be removed regardless of whether or not it's in 61A or not. You know, as I mentioned, the, it's a common goal here to protect the land and keep it the way that it is. You know, as she mentioned, she could do a pretty small horse farm, remain close to Main Road up in the uplands. It's, it's a large parcel. She's willing to grant an easement to the Buzzards Bay Coalition to be able to protect those areas. Part of that easement could, could include, you know, a protection that no development is to occur within the easement area. And as I mentioned before, you know, the Wetlands Protection Act does protect any wetlands. So, all of those nine areas that you mentioned are currently protected under the Wetlands Protection Act and there would be no development permitted in that area. And along with the resource area, it does extend outside of the resource area. So, as you mentioned, the runoff, you know, that would, any work to be done within the buffer zone would have to be approved by Concom. And I think they would all be, you know, on, on par with making sure that any drainage issues were taken care of prior to any development for a horse farm or, or anything else. So, you know, respectfully ask the board to consider that in their decision to release the lien. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak?
I would like to hear the response of the Buzzards Bay Coalition. Mr. Petty is.
Obviously, my buyer has been scared away. So, what's the guarantee now from Buzzards Bay Coalition?
Through the schedule, point of order, sir.
Okay.
Direct those to the chair.
And it will be your decision at the end because I've been advised to remain neutral. But if you rule in favor of Buzzards Bay, then what's the commitment? Can they just walk away in 40 days and then I'm stuck back to square one?
Fair question. Mr. Deck, would you be interested in answering that question on behalf of Mr. Petty? Either one.
So, certainly, of course, if, if the assignment's made to, to Buzzards Bay Coalition, we will seek to perform on the agreement as it stands. And we're, we are willing to have discussions with Ms. Cormier after, if the assignment happens and we, and we get a contract in place. As I mentioned, we have intentions of having a conservation on, conservation restriction on the property. We would, we, we're gonna, we're gonna need to, we're gonna need to fundraise to make this transaction occur. We're gonna have to borrow money to make the transaction happen. We have that in place, but we would look to come for, as Mr., as the, as Mr. Harton mentioned, about $100,000 on a conservation restriction, most likely through CPA, maybe with the assistance of the Agricultural Open Space Council. But that's, that's our, that's our track record. We've done that number of times here in town. We have acquired properties and placed conservation restrictions on them, sometimes with the Conservation Commission. In fact, we're doing that right now just on Meadowbrook Lane, sometimes with Westport Land Conservation Trust. We did that up on Lyons Brook. As was mentioned, this is a super sensitive, very important ecologically, a property that is worth protecting. That's what we do. We perform on, we perform on our obligations that we have and we protect property into the future, in addition, making it publicly accessible. That's what the conservation restriction would ensure into, into perpetuity, along with no hint of development on, on, on the property.
Thank you for that explanation. Mr. Decker, you got a question?
Yeah, I, I, well, I just wanted to know, is, is there any possibility that you could work with the current buyer to try to work some kind of agreement out where they would help fund it?
Absolutely.
Okay. I would, I would very much encourage you to do that if you can. Because this is something that we really, we need to save it, we need to save it permanently. But I don't want to crush someone's dreams doing that and it would work out for all of us at best if we could figure some kind of compromise somewhere.
Right, no, absolutely. We're, we're interested in working with, with our, if the opportunity presents itself.
As the seller, but, you know, you heard your response, but I'm looking for a non-refundable commitment in the purchase and sale agreement. That if you're gonna buy this, you're gonna put up money and it will be non-refundable if you back out of the deal.
Okay, well, I don't think a response is required today. We appreciate the comment, however, and understand the board. Yes, yes.
Hi, my name is Jenna Magnuski. As a community that values farming and values being close to the land, which is why there is an open space and Ag-focused commission in town. And also having some understanding myself through my work of how conservation restrictions and conservation easements work, would it be possible to have as a condition of releasing the lien in order for Ms. Cormier to buy the property to say that it is with the understanding that it, she would have to put X number of acres or something like that into the easement going to the Buzzards Bay Coalition? It seems like that would be a way in which, like you said, dreams are not being crushed. We are maintaining community values and we're conserving the important conservation values on that property.
Thank you.
We clarify with the town administrator, within the timeframe that we have to lock this up with Mr. Petty, that probably wouldn't be too feasible, right? We got 10 days left to do the documents. If, if we were even considering.
10 days left to exercise our right of first refusal and then you have so many days to finalize and close, correct?
Correct.
Is that 40 days or?
Ninety days.
Ninety days to close. So, I think 90 days, you may be able to come to some kind of agreement with them. I would hope that you could. She seems like she's very amenable to this and I think it might help you out with your funding, so.
Mr. Bullard, members of the select board, I, I want to say that I'm, my name is John Bullard and I'm on the planning board and I'm on the open space board and I'm on the board of the Buzzards Bay Coalition. So, I've had a chance to look at this issue and other issues from different perspectives. And first of all, I want to commend Mr. Petty for preserving this land and his family for 100 years because otherwise we wouldn't be here. And I've watched Mr. Decker and other people at the coalition tackle projects like this, you know, dozens, hundreds of times. And they're complex and they take time. But the frame of reference, Mr. Petty said, you know, is, he's been saving it for 100 years. So, you know, we have to have that frame of reference of time. And I want to come back, Mr. Valcourt, to something you said, which I think is very important. If you were to release this restriction, this land goes unprotected. And if it's unprotected for even a moment, then bad things can happen. Not that we want them to happen or that we're intending them to happen, it's just sometimes they do. And the outcome that we're talking about here of dreams being realized that bring both these parties together is going to take time, no matter how it works. It's not a slapdash, three days and we bring all the parties together and negotiate. That's, you know, if, if all these parties are gonna get together, that's going to take time either way. But I'm an optimist and I've seen Mr. Decker and others do this many other times where property is saved, but it's also used and conserved. That happens. So, I know it can happen here. Will it happen? I don't know, but it can happen. But it's, it's going to take time, but it's worth it to try. But it is not worth it to risk even a moment of having this land unprotected when bad things can happen. So, if you, if you assign the restriction, then the land is protected while these things get worked out. And, you know, parties talk to each other, they, they get worked out and we see how an optimal solution gets arrived at.
Thank you, Mr. Bullard. Any comments from the board, select? Mr. Petty?
I would like to thank Mr. Bullard and commend him for talking about my, the land. There's been a lot of talk about conservation, but myself, my family, we've actually lived conservation for a very long time as farmers. And I need everybody here to understand that. We've been in this town far along in the five minutes. I can trace my ancestry back here to 1637. And you can go to the town hall, look at the veterans on the memorial to see my family and its legacy here. So, with that said, at the end of the day, this all impacts me. And as the elected representatives, you represent the constituents, which I am a member of Westport, not Buzzards Bay, not the buyer. And I hope that factors into this.
A motion has been made, a second has been given. Could we read the motion for us? While I'm asking. Read the motions. Refresh our memory and order the motion.
Questions to exercise our right of first refusal and assign that to Buzzards Bay Coalition.
Are we clear on the motion? Any further discussion from the board members? I've given everybody a chance to speak. At some point, we have to move forward. I suggest it's now time to vote. Those in favor of that motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. That motion carries for in favor, none opposed, with one absence.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the, the original person that was trying to buy the land was out of the room at the time and the board showed that we'd like to see you try to get some use of the property, Buzzards Bay's open review. So, hopefully your dream can come true and everybody can be happy. Except for Mr. Petty, that's unfortunately got to wait a little longer for his check, but, you know, we, we hope it's really good to the town.
I know she was also here for Bob Bullard's comments and the priority here is to protect the property, not to take it away from you. So, to protect the property first and as he stated, if we release it today, it's unprotected. And from that point forward, you could back out of your deal, Mr. Petty could sell us to the highest bidder. It's, it's not that that would ever happen and I'm not suggesting that in any way, shape or form, but these are the possibilities that we have to, you know, my mom always said, you know, prepare for the worst and hope for the best. And so, we're preparing for the worst and we're hoping for the best that the coalition and you can come to some agreement. It seems that you've worked with them before in the past, so there's a history there. We hope that this can work out for you. But our, again, please understand our priority was to protect this very, very sensitive area that has literally within a thousand feet of it, nine different tributaries of the Westport River.
Thank you, Mr. Valcourt. That closes the discussion. We've all been heard. We'll close the public hearing and thank everybody for their participation, your patience and your thoughtfulness. Continuing on now, where we left off was, I believe it is for.
Planning board?
For E. This is a, what is correct? Request from the planning board to appoint Michael Burris as town planner. First, Mr. Hart, if he has any comments, then we'll ask Mr. White and Mr. Dale to make comments. Do you have any comments?
They had a request for the board's selection to appoint a citizen there as a town planner position. This has, the salary had been presented to the personnel board and they did approve the change for this position as well as the assistant planner. There's funding in the budget for this position. It was approved at the end of town meeting.
Thank you. Mr. White, you want Mr. Dale or both?
Okay, this is a long time coming for us. We, we advertised and we got seven applications for town planner. And we interviewed two and we chose one, Michael Burris. And I think he would be a great addition to our town. He is a planner. He's had experience in small town Vermont as, in a four, four-person planning office. He's had experience in small-town Vermont in a four-person planning office. And he's also had experience where he's currently working, in Franklin County, Ohio, which is Columbus, I think, is the county seat. And with a very large group of planners, and he has worked on water and sewer issues for an unincorporated area of that county that had very small lots. So it sounds familiar. It sounds like it could be very helpful to us. Bob spoke with the folks up in Vermont, and you could?
Jim and I both interviewed him, and then both of us have corresponded with him, and we both spoke to his references. And the references are very, very laudatory. Everyone said to have him left, and he's brand, and we talked about the duties of being both ministerial, that is, he's got to administer a law and get applicants and do all that kind of stuff, plus the actual planning work and grant writing, and the things that we need, that we don't have now the capacity for. So this is really an opportunity, and he's done all of those things. He's run a department, he's worked in a much larger department, he's worked on obtaining sewer and water grants in communities, all of the things that we need, he's done. He's the only applicant that actually had the AICP certified planner designation. And from the conversations in Ohio, he's a rising star in the department. So the things that we need to get done in providing some capacity within the town for grant writing and administration, I think we've come upon a very good candidate.
And so I spoke with his references from Ohio, which are his current report and his current supervisor's supervisor. And both of them gave him flying marks, great marks, were sad to see him go, knew he wanted to make this change, and were wishing him well, but will sorely miss him. So I think that we've made a good decision. The salary range does fit within the recently restructured salary range for the town planner that was approved at the personnel board in August. And this fits right in the center of the range of $90,000. And we would hope that you would approve the hiring of Michael Burris and have our HR department, Mr. Hartnett, send a letter of agreement to him post haste. We would like him to start on October 3rd.
Is he with us tonight, Mr. White?
No, he's not.
Not required, as you know, I have a long drive.
And it's a long drive, yeah. And so the sheet that I just sent over to you shows where the money's coming from to pay for these salaries. Both the assistant planner, we can talk about in a minute, and the town planner. And they're both within the approved budget from this past spring, really because we haven't had a town planner since July 1st, when the budget started. So we have that part of the approved, previously approved town planner salary, 25% of that is a cushion. So even when we apply these new salaries and new position, we're still like $10,000 or $11,000 under budget.
Thank you. Mr. Hartnett, this is all with your approval as human resources person?
It's a human resources. Yes, we get the letter out, it's approved by the board of selection. We'll add a few dollars to next year's budget, but this year they aren't coming in the budget.
Okay. This is not a contract position?
This is not a contract. Covered by the personnel board.
Okay.
The only difference is the vacation. Normally, we give five-day vacation as of January 1st, and then 10 days as of July 1st. I don't know if you discussed that with the applicant.
We don't know those things.
That would be originally the proposal. If it changes, we can come back before the board.
Okay. We'll have that understanding and go forward with that.
And the other thing, maybe you could, Mr. Hartnett could tell us, but previously, years ago, we had this problem where they had to start at 90% of the salary for six months, and then they get full salary, and I would hope that we can start them at full salary.
I think we changed that.
Yeah, did you change that?
We did change that.
That correct was the answer.
And he has, we have discussed with him compensation to salary, and he has agreed to the $90,000. He was, there was a brief negotiation and looking for more, because the advertisement had a range of higher salary. And we made it clear that we couldn't possibly start him more than, you know, first day in the job, somewhere in the middle of the compensation.
Okay. What is the pleasure of select board?
Did we appoint him?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion?
Just a small editorial. As Jim, what you know, is our servant planner came from out of state. So anybody that's nervous out of state, they can work out wonderfully like Jeff Walker does as servant. He came from, what, Virginia or down that way? So it can work out, you know, hopefully, you know, they give good screening, and this person will be asset to the community. You know, obviously, we don't want to be a stepping stone. Hopefully, he'll do a good job. Like I said, Jeff Walker's been doing a great job as servant planning piece from out of state.
Well, I have seen Mr. White and Mr. Cole bring people in and recommend them for positions in this town and encourage them to run. And so far, I haven't seen a bad, so far, I've been amazed, I've been amazed at the level of incredible amount of ability and talent that they've managed to recruit for this town, that do spend countless hours uncompensated. So I trust that their judgment on this, that they've chosen a good candidate. And if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. But I would trust Mr. White and Mr. Dale and Mr. Bullard and the rest of the members of the board and Mr. Cole, that you've got the guy you need, you know, so.
But it's hard to fill the position of Mr. Hartnett after you stole him from us. But it is, we're hopeful that he will at least be able to sit partly in the seat, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none?
I don't know if you need to, the record, it's October 3rd, it's on this hire date, October 3rd.
Yeah.
Is that part of the motion?
I moved it, what they added, we rest it.
Just want to make sure, it seems like we always get it with the back.
Okay. Yeah, clear this up. The motion was approved, four in favor, none opposed, and one absent. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, as long as you're here, can we, and I apologize to the people who want to, at the 5A, which is cell tower discussion, but quickly, 6C is a request from the planning board to amend the salary of the assistant planner position. Jim?
Yes, so we have, I wish Jim your best.
We have Amy Nessie over there now, she's been there for probably over a year, right? She's been great to work with. I think there's other opportunities out there. We looked at the salary comparison, they presented it to the personnel board, the personnel board came up with a range. What they're proposing is within that range, not very high, but within that range, and we do have money in their budget for it.
Okay. And Mr. White or Mr. Dale, or both?
Yeah, I agree with what Mr. Hartnett said. We've been very happy with what she has done, and we don't want to lose her. And that's happening a lot, I'm sure you're aware, everywhere.
People polls should start them.
And she was a finalist in consideration for assistant planner position in another town. And so we had the risk of both in acquiring a new planner, we had, it would have been possible to play it in a lose-lose sense and not get a planner and lose the assistant. Luckily, we went through, you know, some conversations with both of them, we were able to achieve both of them.
Well, I think it's incredibly important at this particular time, and because of all the new subject regulations and MS4 regulations, all the things the state's throwing at us, that we really have to have good planning and all of the developments we're having. I mean, there are.
Route 6.
Not just Route 6, but there's a, how many residential developments have you had to go through, just this year alone?
We have lots of them, and we have big solar farm.
Solar farms, I mean, there's so many special licenses, and then, you know, also, you have to deal with zoning issues and things like that, and signage, and there's so many things that you're looking at, not to mention updating our ancient and, you know, outdated, you know, bylaws and whatnot, which you've been doing a phenomenal job at. And so there's so much going on with the planning board that people don't get to see, because it's all done by these gentlemen and their helpers. You know, basically, almost nobody at the meetings, other than the people who are involved in it, you know? And so I just want people to understand how important this is to have both of these positions, because we fought very hard to get them both approved at town meeting and to try to keep them with our budgets that we have, which are extremely, you understand, extreme around them.
So this is a good day. So was the motion made or seconded?
It was. Is that effective October 3rd?
I did motion it.
I said.
I would like to make it as soon as possible, so I don't know when that would be the case.
However long it takes to process the change.
Okay, so starting as soon as possible instead?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll amend my motion, starting as soon as possible.
What is motion, amended motion made and seconded? What is the date on that, the as soon as possible?
I would say the beginning of the next paper.
Which is?
I'm not sure.
The first of the month?
All right, but everybody knows what that means, right?
Next Monday.
As long as everybody, other than me, understands what that means.
The 19th, September 19th, effective September 19th.
Whatever. All right. Motion made, discussion replaced. Any further discussion? All in favor, you can be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The motion carries for, in favor, none opposed, and one absent. Thank you, gentlemen.
I thank you. Can I have one moment just to thank you, and also to point out why we need this and what we're going to be doing with these two positions? We are working on the water and sewer, as you know. We need to hire a manager for that, and we need your approval to go out and talk with people to do this. It would be funded through Senator Roderick's ARPA earmark, and he's pushing us to do it. He thinks we need to do it. There's money out there, but we need somebody to help us get it, so.
But the item's not on the agenda.
No.
Would it be okay?
With its meaning, right.
Two weeks, would that be?
Yeah.
Just giving people a heads up, so. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Great. Okay, I appreciate those who have waited to discuss the cell tower. So the next item on the agenda is 5A, the cell tower settlement agreement. I will ask Jim Hartnett to introduce the topic for us and impart any information that we wish.
So there's a cell tower proposed, Drift Road and the Massachusetts Road, and before the zoning board reveals, I think it was six months ago, similar to that time period, the zoning board did not approve the cell tower at that location, but the applicants appealed it to the courts. They've gone through the initial process, the board of selection, and the zoning board appeals have met numerous times on this executive session with the town attorney, the town council. They've looked at different options, other properties that might potentially work, they were presented to the cell tone, I think it's municipal.
Yeah.
They've not approved of those locations. The board of selection has been advised, and the zoning board, by council, that these are extremely difficult cases to win. And at this point, they would have to start the next phase, which would be discovery, expert witnesses, trials. So we have spent some significant money already, and from this point on forward, it would increase quite a bit. Without a positive outcome, or at least the potential or odds are that we would have a positive outcome, it's difficult to move forward with these cases.
Yeah, I wish to point out, these discussions were an executive session declared by the chair to go into executive session for these deliberations because of the threat of litigation. And that's always arguable, as you know. But I supported that. And at times, I was frustrated because we couldn't give that information out, and we had to see the process through. So I know some of you were wondering why there wasn't more information, that is the reason. But in any event, we did end up agreeing, the board of, the zoning board of appeals is the one, would you say that they were, they were in agreement with this? This was, the conditions put forth were those that they required to be part of the agreement, and we did have success in getting most of them or all of them.
May I say something?
Please, yes.
They did, to my recollection, they did agree to all the conditions that were originally put on them by the zoning board of appeals in order to be approved in the first place, which they initially refused, and then upon settlement said, okay, well, we'll abide by those conditions. So, you know, we got what the zoning board wanted in the first place, and so I don't want people to think that this was a complete loss. We actually got the conditions that were suggested by the zoning board to begin with in order to approve it, and they did agree to all those conditions, so.
Thank you. Any other comments from the select board? If not, any public members, any guests who should speak on this issue or say something? Feel free. This is not a public hearing, but we do encourage.
Garrett Stuck. So I was very involved with the.
You don't need to talk right into the camera.
I don't need to talk right into, okay. I was very involved with the opposition to the cell tower and followed the case as closely as I could. Of course, it was mostly done in secret, so we didn't really know what was going on. But I did look at the appeals court website that has the filings, there were 27 filings in this case, sent by the town's attorney, sent by their attorney. I wonder if you could kind of walk us through how some of those filings came out? So I know, for example, that the plaintiff moved to prevent discovery. Basically, they didn't want to be asked any questions about whether they had explored other sites, or whether they had, you know, done any real due diligence on this. And they asked the court to permit them to avoid discovery. I know the town filed, the town council filed a motion opposing that motion. How did, I'd be interested in learning how that came out, and was there something that happened in the process of this hearing that turned the tables? Because from my perspective, it looks like the town just caved.
Well, I would take exception to that comment, but in due respect, but Mr. Hartnett, do you have any insights on this?
To answer the question of the discovery, I'm not sure. How that actually proceeded, what the end result was. I just, I can say that from the very beginning, I think you're one of the first meetings we had with the executive board, who were kind of advised, this is what we were advised, this is very difficult to defend, and the likelihood of succeeding is not very good, but.
And costly.
And costly.
Extremely costly. But again, if we had proceeded to federal court, the Federal Trade Commission has established rules and regulations which were very much in favor of the communications company and not the town in our bylaws, okay? Federal Communication Commission, similar to what happened at the turn of the 19th century to the 20th century, when they decided to electrify the whole country, they just basically said, yes, you need to go out and do this. They want the same for communications. They want everyone to have access to communications, and quite frankly, I've been in situations in that part of town where I've had emergencies. in that part of town where I've had emergency situations, I was not able to communicate with my family, and I had a very bad emergency that happened. So, I very much, you know, conflicted as to, you know, what, what we were doing. And, but, when it comes down to it, our zoning board had said, if you meet these conditions, we will grant you the license. The fact that they did that gives them, gave, and this is, and again, this is my perspective of it, I'm not giving you a legal opinion, but that gave them the ability to go to court and say, well, they, they were going to approve it, you know, if we just follow the-- And I think, looking at both ends of it, I don't think they wanted this to go further in litigation. We certainly couldn't afford further litigation. They capitulated to all our terms that had, the zoning board had originally proposed, ZBA had originally opposed, proposed, to approve it, and, I mean, that, we felt that that was the best we could get without further expending literally hundreds of thousands of dollars that the town doesn't have. So, that is kind of, I will tell you, that's kind of the feeling that was in the room as we were having these executive sessions, that what can we get? What concessions can we get them to make so that they just don't steal or us? And I think that's, that's about where we were able to get to.
This slide, who wishes to speak?
It's very difficult. The ZBA did their job very well. The conditions you spoke of were conditions that many of us offered to the ZBA as absolutely necessary if they approved the tower. They did not approve the tower, and they did not want to put in these conditions. There were seven variances, et cetera, et cetera. We realized very clearly that there is a need for these communications companies, so you're to have the representative in town, to be able to cover the town, to cover the beaches, and all of that. The main argument, which I haven't seen in other cases, was that T-Mobile did cover all that area, and they didn't have a large tower. They were able to do it. We had an example right in front of us, that it was possible to have the coverage for AT&amp;T, Verizon, and all the rest of them without a large 100-foot, 50-foot cell tower at the corner of Route 88 and Drift Road. The second thing is that was right next to a state highway. It could fall. We had, I feel, we had very good arguments, and the ZBA carried those out. I don't understand when you would say to the court, there were several possibilities, and that possibility was mentioned, was that emphasized? Was that, was that understood?
Yeah, we mentioned that, if you go down Route 6--
We batted that one back five or six times with the lawyers.
Yes, and--
If you go down Route 6, every one of them falls across Route 6. So, they've already been granted numerous times across the state highway.
Okay, okay, okay.
We, again--
But what about--
We were advised by town council that that was a losing argument.
So, it's also a matter of, a matter of money, and this, of course, sets a really terrible precedent and probably shows the need for an override, partially. But during the process, we were not informed of anything. And you know how many hundreds of people were involved in opposing this. There were people in favor. What about in the future, in such cases? You know, there are opportunities for private people to be involved. It's a little late now because you've signed an agreement, but through the process, nobody was contacted to help raise funds, et cetera, that I know of.
May I address that?
Go ahead, yeah.
This board, when the town is sued, is the only entity that has the ability to enter into agreements and enter into settlements. And we had many public hearings and took much public input. We fought as hard as we did as long as we could because of that, that input and because of those concerns. And again, we feel that we got the best agreement we could get without having to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and risk just being mowed over and having no conditions. So, at some point, you have to make a decision. You have to say, are we going to further pursue this losing battle and lose a lot of money? Or are we going to try to get something reasonable and come to an agreement? And it wasn't, please don't think this was lightly considered in any way, shape, or form. We sat here for hours, literally hours, in multiple executive sessions, going back and forth, sending proposals, going back and forth, and finally, at some point, they capitulated to our original conditions and said, okay, we'll do this. And at that point, if we didn't at least, you know, attempt to have some kind of agreement, then they've got, you know, a great case for we weren't bargaining in good faith. We asked for this, and then when we said, okay, we'll give you this, we wouldn't give it. You know, that's, you know, definition of bad faith. So, we felt, again, I don't speak for any other board member myself, I feel that the board's consensus was that this is the best we can get, this is the best we can hope for without playing Russian roulette.
So, when you, you meant executive sessions, not public hearings?
We had many public hearings beforehand--
That was the ZBA.
Yes, I know. The town itself had many public hearings beforehand. We did not, again, because once you go into lawsuit status, that's protected information for both the town, for a strategy management, and for the plaintiff, for rights of privacy. So, again, when you're in a negotiation, it's, it's a process that we go through, and we can't, and if it's an executive session, we're not allowed to tell you about it--
I know.
--until it's over with. You're aware of that. You understand--
But I thought--
Trust me, we're in a horrible position, and we did what we felt was the best thing in the position we were put in.
But I thought you said something about there was a possibility either of public or executive sessions, and you could choose. I thought that's what you said in the beginning.
I did. What I said was, the board, if you have to go into executive session, you have to have a vote, a roll call vote.
Right.
And we don't have to go into executive session if we decide not to. And this is a good question on your part because--
Yes.
I think the, the selection of executive session in this case is arguable. I think that a lot of them are arguable, particularly around the issue of litigation.
Right.
The other reasons for executive session are pretty clear.
Right.
But this one talks about litigation, it uses a litigation, but in the explanation provided by the Attorney General, who's responsible for enforcing the open meeting law, there's a little bit more verbiage as to when is, what do we mean by litigation and when does it become correct to go into executive session?
Right.
My takeaway from this, and I always, I'm not happy with the outcome, but I say to myself, it's over, but what have I learned? What I think all boards should do, particularly Select Boards, is make sure when we go into executive session for the purpose of litigation, we are clear as to the reasons why. And I think there can always be argued back and forth, and I think that's where, then it had the so-called, somebody mentioned earlier, secrecy. It's not intended to be a secret process--
No.
It appears to be that way.
Yes.
There are minutes of executive session, and I don't know when they become made available to the public, but it's not really--
Many days.
It's not a secret process. It's, it's a protected process. I support what Mr. Valcourt is saying about protected information. But to answer your question specifically, is that's a board decision to do that? We could have voted not to do that. Our lawyers would have been unhappy, but that's the way it goes. That is our decision, and it has to be done by a roll call vote.
But we also need to clarify, I think, instead of openly, like the police say, can and will be used against you with a court law. Everything we say in the open can be used against us, which drags it out longer. Somebody says in a statement, it takes forever. You've got to be very careful if we're going to discuss litigation in open.
Thank you.
Well, sure, but I would just respond to that by saying, sometimes when we label it litigation, it's really not litigation. We, we didn't want to go to court on this one.
No.
We haven't filed against us, correct? We haven't filed against--
There was litigation filed against us in two different courts, in the State Court and the federal court.
Right.
So, we would have had to defend two different cases, one in State Court, one in federal court. And I don't know if any of you have ever, you know, had any experience with the federal court, but my brother, who is a federally licensed attorney, an admiralty attorney, charges $450 an hour to go to federal court. So, it's not cheap.
Okay, thank you.
David Cole, just one thought. As you said, there were many hearings held by the Zoning Board of Appeals, but not by the Select Board. And the Select Board was sort of driving--
I said the town, I didn't say the Select Board. I said the town had any--
I'm clarifying that there were hearings, but I think in, for future reference, it might have been desirable for the Select Board to have had an open hearing on the matter, or maybe a joint ZBA Select Board hearing before you went into executive session, so that you could have heard the voices of the people and the issues that they were concerned with. Secondly, I thought that the ZBA developed a very good document before they made their vote of all of the reasons why they were denying it. And you say, now that there were conditions, I don't know how those two matched up, the kinds of concerns that the ZBA expressed and the conditions that were finally applied. I haven't seen any conditions that really impose any restrictions on what the developers are going to do that are, have any significance. We're going to get the tower, it's going to be 150 feet, it's going to be in a terrible location.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Okay, there's no action required on this item with discussion, I think we've given our, our view. We can't have this go on all night long, but, Mr. Brownlee--
Thank you. Buzz Brownlee from Massachussetts Road. I just wanted to make two points for the record. We had a, I almost, almost finished with COVID family reunion two weeks ago, and my grandson who lives in New York heard about all this. He says, oh, well, you ought to talk with this guy. He's an expert on cell towers. Or is an attorney who represents towns across the country in various, in various states. And I said, well, I think it's pretty much over the, over the dam. The decision's been made. So, you ought to talk with him. And he went, well, for my grandson's benefit, I gave the fellow a call, a fellow named Byrne in New York, an attorney. He, I had emailed him in advance, and he had read all the materials with regard to the case before I called him, and he'd really done his homework. And he made two comments that I think we ought to be out there for the record. The first is that the Zoning Board of Appeals made, did an exemplary job in their hearing process, being ultimately fair to all the parties involved. He was really taken with that, and this is in comparison to such cases around the country. Secondly, he said, he did, they did an exemplary job in the written decision. He said they laid it out very well, and it was, to him, a fine basis for contention of the decision. He added in closing that he felt the, the town could have done much better. His, his thought was that the, the appeals hearing and then the written decision were enough to go forward in spite of the cost. And he, I explained to him the nature of Westport and our finances, and he said he fully understood that, but he also said that, you know, Westport, should it have lost in court, would not have been liable for court, and the attorney sees municipal communications. Nonetheless, I just speak as someone among many people in Westport, and is seriously disappointed by this decision. And I think, as been, has been mentioned here, the fact that we were kind of blindsided by the process in the end, and that was the feeling of a number of people, really didn't help of the way the decision has come down, didn't help our perception of how it happened. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brownlee. Well spoken. If somebody else wishes to speak, please.
I'll be passed. Cindy Scheller, I have been opposed to the cell tower since it was proposed. What I would like to know is who is going to be making sure that they abide by these 27 concessions that they've made? Is this the zoning board's job?
The zoning board is the licensing agent, correct?
Building inspector--
The zoning inspector and the zoning, is the zoning enforcement officer, and--
I hope it doesn't slip through the cracks. Now that the hoopla is over, I hope somebody's paying attention because they have been, they, they only do things when they're pushed to do them. We've seen that. So, thank you.
I'm aware. I'm also aware that, you know, a corporation like AT&amp;T, which has unlimited legal budget to beat a town down like us, it's an egregious fact, but it's a fact, it's reality, it's what we're up against. And so, we have to look at, unfortunately, what our budget is when we think about defending a lawsuit. And with a very, you know, a lawyer can have all the opinions in the world. Our town council brought a case against Monsano for the PCVs in the middle school. It was dismissed with prejudice by a judge whose husband is an executive in Monsano. So, that's what happens when you get to federal court, okay? You don't know who appointed that judge, and what kind of bias they have, and what kind of political motivation they have. Obviously, that case was dismissed out of hand with prejudice by a judge that should have never been on the case, but nobody raised that issue, and we had proof that Monsano had known that PCVs were dangerous since the 20s. They had to put masks and things on people who were working where they were manufactured. They had nearly 100 years of documented cases of issues with PCVs, and yet, that was, was thrown out, and they told us we had no standing and that we had no proof that PCVs caused any problems. So, that's, this is, this is what happened when we brought that case to federal court. So, you know, if we can get some concessions at least, I mean--
Well, hold their--
That's the way I look at it.
Hold their feet to the fire, make sure that they--
Well taken.
Say they're doing--
The Scheller's point is well taken, thank you. Okay, we're going to conclude the discussion of 5A. I hope it was helpful. All right, the next item on the agenda is six, a series of action items. 6A is to request to amend the Public Health Director contract.
And this was discussed in, I think, detail at the last board of Select meeting. Board of Health applied for and received a Public Health Excellence Grant, $300,000 a year for the next three years, I believe. Westport is going to take a lead. The lead on that grant, as part of that grant, is $45,000 in admin costs that the director or can be used by the town of Westport, and there are no restrictions on those funds. The Board of Select, the Board of Health, requested that the Director of Public Health receive an increase in salary of $5,000 to cover the additional work associated with this grant, and there will be additional work associated. Again, it was, since you voted on at the last meeting, so it's just a matter of approving it and signing the amendment to its contract.
A move that we approve--
Aye.
As amended.
Any further discussion? All in favor, can you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries, four in favor, one opposed, one-- Four in favor, one opposed, one absent. Thank you. The next item, make sure I have all of these, is B. This is a request from Sue Brayton.
Yes, Sue Brayton.
Our town treasurer to reclassify the principal clerk position in the treasurer's office in post. Miss Brayton, welcome.
How are you? Good evening. All righty. I'll start with, I've written something up here for you, and so I'll just read it. "The town of Westport has already experienced what can happen when unqualified people work in the financial departments of the town. It is essential to the financial well-male being of the town of Westport to hire and maintain good qualified staff in all financial departments. Having said that, since July of 2020, when the treasurer and collectives departments were combined, I have been understaffed and/or had staff in training. The positions in these offices are not fully trained until a full year passes, as there are certain functions that happen only once a year, although six months is about an average time needed to be familiar with most operations in the position. Each time an employee leaves a position, it compromises the offices in a multitude of ways. The remaining staff must work twice as hard to pick up the additional duties left behind by the vacancies. These added burdens can cause stress and frustration for the remaining staff, especially when we are minimally staffed to begin with. The goals of the office are often sacrificed in an effort to simply maintain the day-to-day operations, which can put the town at financial risk if critical deadlines are not met. Even after a replacement has been hired, the extra workload continues until the new employee has been adequately trained. Since July 14th of 2022 this year, the principal clerk position in the treasurer's office has been vacant. The position has been advertised without satisfactory results. Therefore, at this time, I'm asking the select board to upgrade the principal clerk position to the, in the treasurer's office to payroll benefits tax title specialist." Can change the name if you want. "This position is absolutely critical to the town and has many essential duties. The person hired must have an extensive background in understanding payroll and benefits. It is not simply data entry. Payroll requires knowledge of hourly salary, monthly, quarterly pay differential, seasonal, full-time, part-time, temporary, lump sum pay, military leave, IOD, FMLA, sick leave, paid leave, unpaid leave, and more. Benefits requires knowledge of insurance, health, dental, eye, life, and disability, various retirement plans, court orders, COBRA, HIPAA requirements, eligibility requirements for each, and the restrictions placed on those for life events. The town of Westport employs almost 400 full-time employees and has almost 350 retirees. This employee is a responsibility for promptly and accurately processing all paperwork for new hires, interminations, and retirees. And yes, that is for both the town and school. Recently, as the school was preparing for the new school year, we had between two and four people a day in the office processing numerous paperwork, volumes of paperwork. In addition to payroll and benefits, this position is responsible for many additional duties, including preparation and maintenance of all tax title records, verifying vendor checks, issuing reports biweekly, monthly, and yearly, W-2s, ACA reporting, and performs a variety of clerical and administrative support functions. As treasurer, I fully understand the strained financial situation of the town. However, I also understand the need to prevent additional financial strain, and, as I originally stated, the lack of stability in financial offices presents a great deal of risk. I believe there is a need to reclassify this position, and I am asking the board to approve the reclassification and increase the pay rate."
I have a question, others too, as well, if you're so inclined. So to reclassify the principal clerk position to, to what, or is it to the principal clerk position?
It's...
You may have covered that, I just...
The payroll, I refer to it as payroll benefits tax title specialist. That's their primary duties. However, they do have work to do in various other duties in the office, including vendor checks, processing of deposits and such, and things of that nature.
That description, is that already a job description that addresses a payroll, et cetera, position? Or are those just words describing the position?
This job description that you have in front of you is very similar to the existing one. I've updated it. It's for the sake of this position. What's happened over time, as has happened with so many other jobs and things in town here, is with laws and changes in the laws and such, it's become so much more involved. The MCTA this year made it a two-part course instead of a one-part course at school because it is, payroll and benefits are so involved. And that's, I mean, the MCTA felt that it was that essential to do that. They're requiring that everybody take the new two-part course, even if you've had the one-part course. So it's that involved.
So what, if you're, what level of salary would we compare this to in our...
Well, town of Somerset, ironically, shortly after I advertised, the position reached out to me because they're in the same position I am. They had a person that came in, was there for less than a year, and took a position for more money. Same exact thing that happened to me. They're advertising, and she said, I'm advertising and looking to upgrade our position. We're paying, offering at 25.17, and they're just looking to upgrade it because they can't get qualified help at the 25.17.
It's $25.17. Okay.
Where we were advertising at 20.27. Our school department payroll and human resource people make 31.16.
Go ahead, questions?
No, I just want to reiterate her point. My nephew's wife is an accountant, and she's currently making over $50 an hour. She's three years out of college. So it's very difficult to get anyone at these rates. You do, you're able, the reason we're able to attract people at these rates only is because it's a decent community to work in. They, if they live close by, it's a short commute, so that saves them a lot of time, money aggravation, they can be near their families if there's an emergency. And it's the reason I got out of working for a medical software company, because I didn't want to commute to Boston every day, and I went back to building houses because I could coach my kids' teams, and I could, I could be there and take them to doctor's appointments and things like that, where if I'm an hour, hour and a half away, I can't do it. So, you know, we do get good candidates, but you do have to at least offer them, you know, a decent amount. So I would certainly support the increase in pay, and Mr. Hartnett suggested that we make this a department assistant. Do you believe, is that what you were suggesting?
We currently have, let's say, their clerical positions, but their office positions, a number of departments have considered assistants.
Yep.
And that would be $24.17. I will say, fairness to Sue, that the financial departments right now are running very well. They work well together. They're making progress, closing out year-end stuff from last year as opposed to the year before. Things are going good. I don't want to go backwards. I don't think anybody wants to go backwards, so.
An issue.
I see an increase in the rate, rather than the, I don't, but it's not just this position. It's almost most positions anywhere right now.
It's almost everything.
And again, I think we spent more money over the last few years with consultants and outside help than we would if we had somebody here. I'm not sure what position Sue was looking for. I did speak to the union representative, and they were not opposed to changing the position title as long as it was posted, and everybody had the opportunity to apply for it. But I think the big issue is, what position would you increase it to?
Right. I mean, my feeling is that 24.17 is still a little low, whereas Somerset is having a hard time at 25.7, 25 and change. I do understand how the difficult financial situation the town is in. So, I mean, I personally, I think they should make the same as the school. I know that's unrealistic, but I personally feel that. The union positions that are certified in the middle is, there's a, it's not a clerical position, it's local inspector is a 27.51. There's a 27.51 position out there. You know, that's somebody making that rate. These are existing rates that are in the union contract.
But to be clear, what are you looking for?
I would like to see it somewhere between the 25, what I've found to be existing rates out there, which was the 25 and the $31 rate, which brings it up to, you know, and I'm kind of going middle of the road there, there's an existing union position, not clerical, for 27.51. It's trying to compromise.
My honest, Jim, your reaction to that?
It's a difficult one, right?
Yeah.
Double-edged sword. Budget, everything.
If I thought we could fill it as the assistant, I would go with the assistant, just because it's consistent with the other departments. What we see happen here in town is that if you create a new position or a higher position, the union gets the first, first bid on that position, which says, sure. So you get somebody that moves from department A to department B, and then department A is vacant, and then department C takes department B, and it goes down the line. We have a number of different levels there, so I see that as a possibility, but I think we still need to fill a position, and we need to fill it fast, and to me, that's more the priority than the bulk of it, so. I prefer the assistant, but I don't know, I don't, you know, get a qualified candidate for that. So that being said, I think the level of local inspector is probably a reasonable solution of the cost.
That, that amount, you're going to say that, okay.
The 27.51.
That's what I'm asking. Your comments and view of that?
I would be okay with that.
Yeah. What is the pleasure of the calling?
I would like to, you know, first off, commend you on turning this department around and helping it, helping us get back on track. I would also like to point out that having good people in a position in this department saves the town, literally.
It does.
Way more than we can ever put up.
Correct.
We've seen that, how many, I mean, I think we spent well over $100,000 in consultants over the past three to four years to help get this straightened out. And to not have someone in that position because of $3 an hour, $120 a week over 52 weeks, it's really, it's, it's, you know, $6,000 or so that it's going to cost the town. You get to look at the real end of it. It's $6,000 a year it would cost to bump someone up to that position. Is that a good return on your investment? And that's what I have to, you know, that's what I look at. I mean, I would be willing at this time, with Jim's advice, that we started out 27, whatever it was, 51.
51.
And then if unsuccessful, attracting a candidate at that level, we can revisit it. We can always revisit it. I think that's probably going to be somewhere in the middle where we can, you know.
Aye.
So I'll move that.
Does that's a motion, and do you submit it?
There is something to work with.
Discussion, anyone else? We have questions to speak.
My name is Nadine Castro. I am here because I'm in the union, and Sue has said just the financial departments, it's all of our departments that are necessary. There are many, many departments that if we were not there, this town would not run. And it is extremely frustrating to us union members that time and time we hear certain departments are constantly getting increases, and the department heads are getting increases, thousands of dollars. Matt just got, what, another $5,000? Was Lindsay offered a pay increase if she stayed?
Your question, this must be directed to me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I am. Mr. Chairman.
You made a comment about Matt.
Yeah.
That's the director of the health department.
That was Matt. That was the department heads getting increases, this department getting an increase when we have been fighting for many, many years to get more than 2%, which doesn't even cover our insurance increase. And it's just extremely frustrating when we hear $50,000, $5,000, $10,000 that people are constantly getting. Is it just because they're not in the union? That's what it seemed like. It's just, I just want to know if Lindsay was offered an increase if she stayed? If she was offered the schooling if she stayed?
Well, I'm sorry, you're talking about a particular employee.
The one that left the department, the one that has vacated the department.
I think it's a fair question, but I think we should leave out names of people.
Okay, sorry.
To just say that.
The position.
Private employee or something. Okay, and that, you're asking me to ask?
Sue.
Miss Brayton.
Yeah.
Just, once again, excuse me.
Sorry.
The question is?
I wanted to know if the increase or, you know, what she's coming here for today was offered to the prior employee.
I don't see relevance of the question.
Go through those.
I also see a legal...
Why? What I'm trying to say is if she was offered the position...
Issue with answering that question as far as privacy.
If she was offered the increase...
What, what floor is?
If she was offered the increase, would she have still been here? I think so. I believe that that was the reason why she left, was because of the money reasons.
Well, this may be true, and well and good, but I think it's just not appropriate for our discussion here. We have to make a decision based on the presentation and the realities of everything, including budgets, including the union, and so on and so forth. So to single out what we do with this particular person, that's the departmental manager's prerogative, I understand that, and that's, I'm sure she does, but she shouldn't have to be explaining that to somebody else as the manager.
The only thing I can say is I did advertise at the former rate, and that's, I was attempting to hire at the existing rate, and it has not happened. Lindsay came over to this office from inside, or the former employee came over from within the union.
Okay, well, I think that sounds to me like the question is answered, to the extent we can answer it. I mean, no disrespect.
It wouldn't be the first time we lost the veterans' office because of money, and the next person ended up getting it, but it was a tedious process that we had to go through. We can't guarantee the question is going to get the money. We have to discuss it out and see what was out there, to be honest with you, so.
And, yeah, I could, if I had found a candidate at the lower rate, at 20.27, that's who would be sitting down there right now.
See what you get first.
Yeah.
The kind of skills that a person needs to have, I say this for any assistant department head, and any, you know, all of our departments, they're all underpaid.
They are.
Every single person who is currently employed in Westport is making between 5% and 25% less than a similar person at a similar position in another town. We've been confronted with this literally dozens of times, and we've been trying to, all we can do as a board is affect the pay rate of the department heads because they're not union employees. not union employees. But when it comes to union employees, we have to negotiate that, all members of that body. That's a much more difficult thing, and that's a much more significant number. And, you know, again, we're, we're under the gun. We don't, our state and our federal governments have reduced our percentage of grant and federal and state monies significantly since 2008, significantly, I mean, since 2000. They've been significantly, every year consistently, reducing it more and more, as is a percentage of our budget.
Correct.
So at one point, when we, and I can't remember the exact numbers, but at one point where 10% of our budget came from the state and the fed, we're down to like 2 or 3. You know, it's, it's, it's a huge gap that the state and the fed has not filled, and the fed can, the state, in some cases can.
We're currently down about 2 mil on state aid.
The fed can absolutely supplement our budgets at any given time with an act of congress, and they refuse, and they choose not to. Okay? And the state can then take the money that's given to them by the fed and direct it towards us more, and they don't. And unfortunately, the reality of it is the vast majority of it goes to the big cities.
Yes.
And we get left out and told, oh, you're rich, and so you don't get more money. And when you, we all know here, and many people like you and I, go to work every single day, and, you know, we live paycheck to paycheck at times, and it's not, it's not, we're not as absolute of a community as people might think we are.
We are a very varied community.
Very much, very much, from all ends of the spectrum, from the poorest of the poor to the richest of the rich, and we have everything in between. And unfortunately, you know, again, we keep going back to this, it's a desperate need to pass an override, where we can adjust our budget to a level where we won't have to think about another override for another 20 years. And we can set our budgets and our operating, our structural budget that we can pay for what we need to pay for, and fund the services that we should be funding. But without any help from the state or the fed, or an override, this is, this is where we're stuck. Where we can effect change, again, is at this level, when we have a position that is either, if it's a union position, again, we talk to the union, we say, how can we try to get this person more compensation? We've done that, since we've done that in this particular.
Well, these are all hard decisions, and I agree with everything you've said, but we've got to deal with the issue before, this is the problem.
This community issue, the other issues are for a longer-term discussion that we really need to have. I've made the motion, Steve seconded it.
And further, for discussion on the motion? All time to vote, I assume, all in favor and capable saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none? The motion carries, four in favor and opposed, one out.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is?
Do one quick thing. I believe the agenda did say, "And post."
Yes.
Yes.
So I do have permission to post.
I will, I'll move that, post the position.
Second.
Okay, so call it an amended motion that includes the posting.
Thank you.
That's an oversight on our budget.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is that to post in-house?
Yes.
You have to go first, first in-house with everything, and then to the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
6D. Was that my?
Yep, that's it.
I think they can avoid it, but was my iPad making that noise there? Was that something?
Squawk.
Okay. All right, 6D, as a David request from Midori Evans from the Cultural Council to post their community-wide, community-wide writing project, which is, I think, entitled "Westport Writes Together Through the Seasons," that launches September 19th, 2022, on the town website. And I'm told that Paula, you will be helping us here with this.
Midori is here.
Oh, okay.
Hello. I brought you your own card and a repaid.
Thank you for hanging in tonight.
Yeah, I am, it's getting to me by bed, but I'm still here. So this is funded from the Helen Ellis Foundation, and it's launching next week. The schools are participating, all the middle schoolers are going to participate, the high schoolers are doing it by choice, the land trust is part of it, the library is hosting readings, the historical society is going to digitize the writings when the project is over. So I'm just trying to get as many people in the town aware of the project as possible. And I figured, let's get on the town website, it's a good place to start. So there's going to be three different prompts, because the project is based on writing through the seasons, and so there's a fall prompt, a winter prompt, and a spring prompt. So the request would be to be able to have it posted for whatever length of time, I mean, I don't know how you normally do it, so some period of time for the fall prompt, that comes down, then the winter prompt, and then the spring prompt.
So the request is to post it on the town website?
Yes.
And Jim or somebody, Paula, who does that? Who does that? Let me talk about that.
All of us.
I will do that.
You do that?
Wonderful assistant.
Are you like a webmaster?
I am a webmaster.
Okay, great, thank you, Ms. Evans, for that, and what is the pleasure of the community?
Sure. Go ahead, Brian, you want to move?
I'll move.
Second.
Be consistent.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
We're glad that the cultural council is still this positive thing in the community. I did the Helen Ellis spread, I was on cultural council probably 25 years ago.
Oh, yeah?
So I'm glad there's still money.
Oh, there's, even more this year than there was last year, so.
Nice.
Awesome, great.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, please in the capable saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? The motion carries, four zero. Thank you for sticking on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. You get the reward for it.
Thank you for sticking there. Thank it in there.
Thank you. All right, action item E is a request to accept the following, if the clerk will allow me to read this, it's short, I guess you'll allow me to read it.
You may read it.
Clerk will allow me to read this, okay. Anyway, request to accept the following donations to the council on aging. $200 for Ralph Urban for best use, $20 equipment loan, best use, $20 Paul Sullivan for tech help, $30 Anne Marie Deschains for tech help, building, $270. What is the pleasure of the community?
Move to accept.
Second.
All in favor and capable saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? The carries, or the usual counts. Thank you. F is the request to approve and sign the MAS DEP Title V review letter. Jim, maybe you can give us more chapter and verse on the site.
So MAS DEP is looking to adopt new regulations that would impact septic systems along Cape Cod and along some of the coastal communities here, along the south coast. We had a meeting with them, a couple of members of the board did attend that meeting, probably about three weeks ago. And I guess the main part of it is, they're either going to require communities to upgrade all their systems within five years to denitrification systems, or there's a possibility of preparing a 20-year plan that would have to be accepted by MAS DEP to address nitrogen in the waters. Because we have a total maxing daily load already determined for the river, they want us to see, they want to see how we're addressing that. I think Westport has made a good argument that they're addressing it in many ways already, and maybe we should have to be part of this process, or when this process comes out, maybe our TMBLs will be below the level required. So working with the planning board, Board of Health, myself and Board of Selectment, care a letter to be sent to DEP with a number of questions about the regulations, just looking for clarification.
And concerns.
And concerns as well. It's been signed by the Board of Health, and the Planning Board, Bob Dale put a lot of time into it, as well as Phil Weinberg and Tanya, Tanya Reiden as well. I think it just kind of puts them on notice that some questions with the new regulations that should be addressed before they finally adopt them, and maybe look at Westport as to what's been done so far.
Yeah, I think I have the letter here, it's in our package, I did get a chance to opine on the contents of it, and I think it's a good letter, and we should respond, it's very respectful.
It's good, the only thing that scares you when you first look at it is it says, "All titles, all Title V is most good dated by then, 2026," kind of scares you because of the four years, but we are, we're asking what time we're not agreeing to that. When I first skimmed it, I thought we were reading it 2026 from the town, it scared the heck out of me.
No.
But if you read it slower, go through it, yeah. We have issues with that. Are you moving it, Brian?
I'm going to move it, but I just wanted to say that Mr. Brewer and myself, and Mr. Hartnett were at that meeting, and it was pretty well, you know, like hinted to us by the DEP rep that, yeah, we're in a position, we're in a really good position to get that 20-year permit and do, because we've already been so proactive. So we're likely not going to feel it quite as hard as other communities who haven't been proactive at all, and haven't been preparing for this. But we have been preparing for this, thanks to the planning board, and the Board of Health, and this board, and many other conservation, other boards in town, we've been moving towards accomplishing what the regulations are trying to accomplish already. So we're in a very good position, and I feel, you know, that our concerns are voiced very well in the letter, and that we had a lot of input from a lot of stakeholders, so I'm moving that, we approve and sign it.
And is there a second to this motion?
I had done it.
You had done it?
I had done it, yeah, so.
Yep.
We always like to add to, Brian, you named all the critical pieces, I'd just like to add David Colt, he did a heck of a lot of work on that, too, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. I didn't mean not to acknowledge anybody, I just, you know, there's a lot of people involved.
Just that I have to read so much of this paperwork, we've got to give a little credit.
Okay, so what we're doing is, the motion is through, approved and signed, this letter, and any further discussion? All in favor and capable saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none? Any real numbers here, Mr. Hartnett? Thank you, that takes care of that. The next item is the Town Administrator Report, Mr. Hartnett.
As we mentioned at the last meeting, Department of Labor Standards is taking down to the town to inspect the transfer station, the seminary, the department. Couple of small items I would note that have been addressed or are being addressed, that's the railing of the transfer station, and they're adding another box to reduce the height of it, and the gas tanks have been replaced, these are two or one 5-gallon tank that didn't have an retractable automatic shut-off cover on it, so that's been replaced. Now, the two bigger items are restrooms at both facilities, we're currently getting pricing on different options for those facilities to see what's available. I did speak to the Department of Labor Standards, they want these things corrected within 30 days, explained the situation to them, and they were well aware that, you know, this isn't something that can be fixed overnight, so we will have to file a letter within the 30 days, but we can request an extension of time, we'll address it as long as they see we're working towards a solution. This will be, it will be significantly costly, both of these facilities, the transfer station and the sanitary, it's possible that upper fundings may qualify for this type, this type of work, that's something we can take a look at, but I guess the point is, we're working on it, we're trying to address it, and get a response into it by the end of the month.
Okay, thank you.
The town wall annex access, there's a walkway out to the back, from the gym to the parking lot, it's been disrepaired for years. We had the elections here this past week. The recreation department's been trying to upgrade it for a while, the highway department went in within a couple of days, and they redid the whole walkway in front of that, and got it done before the election, which was great. The recreation department is also looking to, working with the disabilities commission to put in a push-button door at that entrance to make it fully accessible, so that is ongoing underway. We have the boilers inspected by the insurance company the last week for here and the annex, looking for some upgrades at the town wall annex. Not significant upgrades, but we have Tom's plumber in there this past week, he had some questions about it, so he's going to contact him directly to find out specifically what needs to be done, and what the best solution would be.
You'll get a letter, don't worry, I just got my facilities, I left picking on everything.
I don't quite understand the fit, but it's not, it's not significant. When I say not significant, I think on the high end, it'd probably be about $5,000 on the low end, hopefully under $1,000. Budgets, FY22, the financial team is closing out those budgets, year-end balances, looking for turn-ins from the different departments, and closing out the monthly statements. The preliminary numbers show that we're in line with what we anticipated, and no negative surprises, which is good. Things have been slightly on the positive side, but pretty much where we anticipated. And I think the good news is, there's been nothing negative that we're really concerned about. We'll start with the next year's budget for FY24 over the next four weeks for the tactical planning, budget going forward, and then the actual municipal budgets. Just a couple of other things, Westport Point parking, that little turnaround, maybe sprayed some things up there, done some preliminary looks at that, that's going to be improved in this year's, street contract with the highway department, so they're repaving that turnaround so that they can strike no parking down there, and just make sure there's adequate area for the emergency vehicles to turn around. Hicks Bridge landing, working with the landing commission, we just went off for proposals for the design of that parking lot and ramp, we have two proposals in, the landing commission, I think at the next meeting, they'll be recommending an engineering company to do that design, that's going to be funded with an earmark from Representative Schmidt, and also they received a seat board economic development grant for that design work as well. MS4 permit needs to be filed by the end of the month, Amy over planning has been working on that, along with the highway department and myself, and Kleinfelter Engineering, that will be done. And the garage roof out here was replaced this week. It was good that we did it, there was quite a bit of rot along the bottom, six to 12 inches, this is no drip edge, and it's getting caught behind fisherboard.
I think the last time that roof was replaced, it was before the requirement for ice and water shield on the bottom three feet, so that would make perfect sense, that's kind of why some of these regulations are in place.
Question, I have a question when it comes to MS4, most people are not familiar with that, is there a way you could describe it in 32 words or less?
So the federal government has put requirements on all communities throughout the country. They want you to regulate your stormwater.
Stormwater.
Systems, different parts of town.
Municipal stormwater, right?
Municipal, municipal storms, so, so, yes. So we've been in this plan for about four years, involves cleaning catch basins, street sweeping, you have to identify your catch basin in those areas, map them out, all the outfalls have to be located, tested in the dry weather to see if there's overflow from, and testing the wet weather to see if there's any illicit discharges going into the stormwater. It's fairly regulated, it's nominees and permit to follow, it's expensive for communities. We've been kind of doing it inexpensively over the last few years with these Buzzes Bay, National Estuaries Project, Mass Maritime, interns do a lot of the work, and we've worked with Kleinfelter to do the actual reports, so we've been keeping up with the permits, but every year then the requirements get tougher and tougher, and it requires more and more money.
Okay.
So far, we're staying ahead of it.
Thank you.
It's getting close. That's all I have. Oh, the council on aging roof, that is scheduled to be done the weekend of the 24th.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, we appreciate any further questions for Mr. Hartnett, the Town Administrator Report, and if none, we'll go to eight, approved minutes, last apart to.
Sure, I moved the minutes, August 39th, 2022.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any comments, questions, discussions, corrections, algos? All in favor?
Correction.
In the capable saying aye.
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 Opposed, none? All carries, and listening to one absent. Report on the bill warrant, this is one that we like, we like a lot of color on this one.
I love it. Everything looked.
Why do we leave that on?
Everything looked great with the warrant. I looked it over, I signed it, didn't see anything wrong with it.
Thank you. Selectment, the liaison report, the suggestion for future agenda discussion, I'll just go from right to left, Mr. Willems.
Just that, you know, Route 6 Infrastructure Committee will be digging a little deeper. I don't recall if we had a meeting in between or not, but the, there was just a little zigzagging with folks, so Jim helped me with the, what's the term I'm looking for, Jim?
Outlying.
Yeah, outlying duties type of thing, mission, mission statement type of thing that we'll be discussing. Microdics and Paul Schmidt are supposed to go to our next meeting, I've been trying to get Keating, so we can look at all our funding sources to try to get money. Right now, that's scheduled for the 20th, Paul Schmidt's locked in, I'm waiting to hear back from Microdics and Keating. So right now, that's the hot, the hot topic.
I have nothing to report at the present time.
I had no other meetings this week, these past two weeks, so I have nothing to report on that. One thing I do, would like to mention, Senator Roddick, Representative Schmidt, I believe, will be at the Westport Business to Business, when is that?
Thursday morning.
Thursday morning, please RSVP if you're going to attend, it's $30, and serve breakfast, and you'll get to pepper Rep. Schmidt and Senator Roddick with all your concerning questions.
Well, I didn't mention it because they closed it this morning, but that's all right, we still go all this.
They what?
They closed.
Oh, they closed, they closed it down.
The tenants, but that's fine.
I will be in attendance for that.